Almost.
Okay. Oh, you're going out to a house? No, I guess people.
Okay. You're recording.
What is it? What? You say something?
No.
Here we go. Adequate notice for the same meaning of the given awards to the open public public meaning act pursuant to public law nineteen one nine seven five. Said notices advertising the beacon was posted with Walton Board showing in time. Much like please rise to the public business.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. and Mrs. Paul, you guys want to come up? I'm going to read these, uh, proclamation here naming September as pediatric cancer awareness month. Whereas every September, America renews its commitment to curing childhood cancer and extends its support to young people who deserve the chance to dream, discover, and realize their full potential. Whereas cancer is the number one killer of children under fourteen, it kills more kids than AIDS, asthma, juvenile diabetes, congenital anomalies, and cystic fibrosis combined. And whereas since its inception, two thousand and fifteen, Todd Schultz, the eighteen-year-old founder, leukemia fighter, has made his mission to raise awareness to the statistics of pediatric cancer by creating the organization Paint the Town Gold, a St. Balbrick nonprofit partner. And whereas cancer diagnosed of children turns the lives of the entire family upside down and the noble objective of childhood cancer awareness, he's put to spotlight the types of cancer that largely affect children, survivorship issues, and importantly, to help raise funds for research and family support. Whereas the township of Lacey desires to recognize the month of September two thousand and nineteen as Paint the Town Gold, honor all children who are going through treatment, and those like Owen who have become angels. Whereas the township of Lacey would like to spread awareness through distribution of brochures wearing gold decorations and other activities. Be hereby resolved by mayor and township committee that proclaims the month of September as Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, Paint the Town Gold, and honors and endorses all programs which encourage the importance of raising awareness of childhood cancer, and also to encourage programs to raise research funding for childhood cancer. Now there before be resolved that I, Timothy McDonald, mayor of the township of Lacey, encourage all Lacey residents, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in reaffirming the commitment to the fight of childhood cancer. I'm going to give you this.
Want to say a few words?
Sure.
On the behalf of myself, my wife, my entire family, and all the families affected by childhood cancer, we just want to thank the mayor, the community men, township of Lacey, and everyone who made this possible, and we look forward to everyone helping raise awareness for childhood cancer. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Whatever we can do to help.
So during the month of September, you're going to see some gold ribbons throughout the community, um, in our parks. Um, so you'll ask permission from the schools to do the same around the schools' properties and stuff like that, and this is, um, in honor of Owen and to live like Owen did.
Yes.
And we do still see a few of those signs throughout our community.
Yes. That's amazing.
Thank you.
Number two, public hearing on Fork River Wine and Spirits License Renewal.
Robin, do you want to open up for this?
Would you like me to open? Okay.
Yeah.
We were actually in court on a similar challenge to the license that was granted to Fork River Wine and Spirits, uh, in, over the winter, um, and I believe that we're going to be hearing some of the issues that were raised in that court case here. That court case dealt with the zoning aspect as well as, um, issues concerning the use of the license. And, um, in that case, which was before Judge Ford, she found that the license was being used properly and in accordance with the statutes of the state of New Jersey. I don't know if there's going to be anything else that's raised for you tonight, but I, you know, I'll address them in turn when that's over.
State your name.
For the record, Samuel Rial Jr., the law firm of Albert Connolly and Castle, on behalf of, of the objecting licensee as it relates to the renewal of Fork River's license. Uh, I, I disagree with counsel to the extent that she says as to what Judge Ford decided. Judge Ford decided that as it related to the action of this law, which was a prerogative action, which was intended to ask the court issue an order to direct you to do an investigation, regardless of what the outcome of that investigation would be. Judge Ford, in her decision, only touched upon the construction and zoning issues. She in fact did not write anything, in her opinion, as it related to the liquor license and whether in fact it was being used appropriately. Uh, the honest, uh, direct answer is that while she dismissed the action, uh, the opinion in fact never touched upon your authority as it relates to the exercise of your position as the local issuing authority under Title thirty-three. The objection that has been filed to the renewal, and I don't know whether the licensee is present this evening, and the licensee, uh, has a responsibility to satisfy you under Title thirty-three in the regulations, that it is using its privileges appropriately. The objector has an obligation to tell you what the issues are, but in the end analysis, without the licensee present, you are sort of being, you know, asked to tie one hand behind your back as you look forward. The issues here are not complex, and in fact, we have an expert that we can provide you as it relates to the current operation of that license, Mr. John Coughlin. Mr. Coughlin used to be, before he retired and, and found his way into the private sector, was the chief state investigator at the Division of Alcohol Beverage Control. Uh, the second witness that we would have for you, if you want us, would be William Skoll. Mr. Skoll is a retired trooper, from the state police, uh, who participated in essentially a visit as a pageant to the license and had some conversations with staff. Let me see if I can summarize to you what the objections are, to try to sort through it, because I don't want to take more of your time than necessary, because I understand how valuable it is. You start from the premise that under your local zoning, and that's the other thing, is that in the context of being a local issuing authority for Title thirty-three purposes, you are still in fact members of your council of governing body, which means that you do not take action under Title thirty-three that would violate any of your other ordinances, including your zoning ordinances. This particular property, as I'm sure you're aware, is located in a zone that provides for retail uses. It also provides for restaurants. It does not provide for a bar. That's the one, the one hand. There have been no applications that anyone's aware of that have been made through your zoning board of adjustment for a use variance to operate a bar. And it's an important component to keep in mind as you move forward on this objection, because your ordinance requires a restaurant. A restaurant, under both common definition, if you open the dictionary, or more importantly, under statute under Title thirty-three, requires an operating kitchen. That's the short Reader's Digest version. There is no kitchen on the premises of this particular licensee. The second part of it is that at the time the application was originally presented to you, and if I may, because I think you need to be able to look at it without having it, if I may.
Sure.
Mayor, I have a new book for you and counsel, and I also have, you forget everybody else. We did assemble, if I may, packets of material that you walked through, and I think you can understand what the objection is.
Thank you.
And why from a perspective of that, the ability of this, you know, operating under this privilege.
Okay.
If you take a look at what is marked as Exhibit one A, or in the packet, you'll see the application was filed for the transfer. That application is dated on February twenty-second of two thousand and eighteen. If you take and turn to page four of that particular license, there are two questions that appear there, four point four and a four point five. Four point four asks the licensee or the applicant, what are you doing with the license? That's the easiest way to think about it. And in this particular case, this applicant clearly disclosed that it was not going to run a restaurant at the location, that in fact it was running a retail license operation for the sale of beverages for all premises consumption, and was going to provide a bar. As you know, from your zoning responsibilities as an appellate authority on the zoning laws, that in fact are not permitted use. So right from the, the inception of this particular application, as the applicant itself disclosed to you, and this all the material came courtesy of the clerk administrator being kind enough to respond to an open request, this particular licensee did not indicate that it was going to operate a restaurant, did not indicate that anybody else was going to operate a restaurant, and in fact indicated that basically its operation was going to be that of a liquor store. And the reason I say that is that when you take a look at question nine point three, which is, the statute may be a dinosaur, but sometimes it comes in handy, but under the application, if you turn to page nine, question nine point three, asks the applicant to disclose, and it has an affirmative obligation to disclose, if it has a relationship with any other individual or entity that's going to earn money as a result of the operation. It's not really an undisclosed interest in the context that you're thinking of, but it's simply a sign, is anybody else getting money for this? And as you'll see, in fact, that is in fact the case. So if you take a look at Exhibit B, this is where you start to get down to the nitty-gritty. Exhibit B was a diagram that was provided by the applicant at the time the application was submitted. Very, very small setup, cooler in the middle of the floor, which by the way is a population variation. But a very, very small situation. However, if you turn and look at Exhibit G, you see the plan that was actually submitted to your construction official. And that particular plan gives you the dead giveaway that in fact this license, which provides for retail consumption on premises, and an accessory use, if you want to think of it in the context of land use, accessory use, of being able to sell to patients that pick off a set back or bottle of wine or some other liquor in a restaurant. In fact, you get the drawing that was submitted to your construction official, and if you note at the back of the drawing, maybe a little small on yours, but if you look right in front of the walking box, which is ten by sixty-nine feet long, you see a description put in by the engineer on a drawing that was originally prepared at the same time the application was being submitted and prior to your action, but this drawing was never presented to you. It was only presented to your construction official.
No, we got this.
So what happens is, is that when you look at that notation, it says clearly, a small accessory area. This is a licensee application that was originally from the beginning, I suggest to you, that was intended to look like a duck, walk like a duck, quack like a duck, not be the duck. It was intended to be a retail operator. So when you come back then to the rest of the exhibits, what you see is a situation where now this licensee has a privilege, but there are certain parameters to that particular privilege that are really important. One, you can only sell alcoholic beverages for all premises consumption from a thirty-three, which is this licensee, under a retail consumption license, from your principal bar. You are not allowed to have gondolas in the middle of the floor. All your beverages that you're selling have to be essentially on exterior shelving. You also have to have, since there's been no use application approved or branded, and we all know under the enhanced proofs how difficult it is to get a use variance, there's been no variance for either a tavern or in fact a bar. What you do have is you have a relationship now, remember the application where they didn't disclose anybody else? You have an application now where if you walk into that particular store, and you walk to the back, onto the different flooring that demarks the area that's supposedly the bar, if you want to order food, it comes to the local pizza ring. If you pay for your food, you pay for your food to the people working in the store. It gets delivered to you, it's no different than Domino's or Pizza Hut or anybody else delivers food as takeout, and there's no functioning kitchen. I pay the clerk or the, or the bartender who's there, and as Mr. Skoll can testify, he had a discussion with bartenders how that all is handled, that we would give these up luck. Beyond that, you have the situation where clearly, in the context of this particular operation, you have your zoning application, which is also an exhibit, and I believe it's Exhibit, I'm going to say D, but don't let me go. It is Exhibit D, which is the zoning application. Now, curiously, as we all know, zoning is zoning, construction is construction, and liquor licensing is overdue, and you wouldn't necessarily expect your zoning officer, not familiar, are you, with legacy licensing law, but if you look at the exhibit, the exhibit itself makes clear that the intent of this particular applicant, and now licensee, was to operate a retail space for the sale of alcoholic beverages, and that's why your zoning officer could approve and issue a zoning permit, because this was dressed up as a If you would indulge him, because when you look at the permit, which is the next exhibit, it says in fact retail sales, doesn't say anything at all about operating a bar or a restaurant, which would be consistent with the privilege that's provided under the statute. And I don't ask you to take my word for it, I ask your indulgence that I could ask Mr. Coughlin to come up, if you want to swear, counsel.
I do want to make one point about the zoning permit, and this came up in the litigation. That zoning permit was subsequently amended during the course of the litigation for retail and restaurant use, and it was granted. So, so a lot of this is, is based on the fact that you're saying that the zoning permit was, did not include a restaurant, but that permit was amended.
Here's my problem with that. This is not a restaurant. If you open the Oxford English Dictionary, the Oxford English Dictionary will say, restaurant is a place where you can come, and you can buy food that's prepared on the premises. More importantly, you can't, the statute.
It's too small to see.
Go to the, go to the statute itself, Title thirty-three, it's not regulatory. Thirty-three colon one dash one under the statute under definitions restaurant. An establishment regularly and principally used for the purpose of providing meals to the public, having an adequate kitchen and dining room equipped for the preparing, cooking, and serving of food for its customers, and in which no other business except such as is incidental to such establishment is conducted. This property, regardless of what the zoning application may have been amended, was not compliant with Title thirty-three.
Uh, and if I can make another point, we also discussed this in litigation. The township doesn't have a definition for restaurant code, um, but we, um, we didn't adopt all the definitions in Title thirty-three. There is a, a definition of restaurant in the Ocean County Health Code that just refers to a restaurant that serves food. There's no requirement for a kitchen or preparation of food to be on premises.
How do I respond to that? Because I understand.
Because we talked about this in January.
Title thirty-three is in fact the controlling legislation, not your county regulations or the head of the law, not your, not your county resolution, not even your municipal code. This defines what a restaurant must be, qualified as a restaurant. It does not. It is quite significant.
I'm, I'm a little confused.
Go ahead.
The judge ordered this, right?
Judge ordered what, mayor?
To change the permits and so.
No, judge, no, mayor, she did not.
Well, the judge ruled in the favor of the township that the challenge to the application based on this zoning argument was not appropriate, and she dismissed the action.
And this is not necessarily an argument that's simply based upon zoning. This is based upon Title thirty-three.
Well, we can't arrive at the judge's.
This has nothing to do with the judge, mayor. The, the judge dismissed an action on a summary judgment motion. It reached the merits of the decision. She dismissed it on summary judgment motion. She said that the prerogative redaction was inappropriate, was the inappropriate methodology to bring this before the governing body. That's what she basically disclaimed. There was no discussion on merits, no decision on merits. Her opinion did not touch upon, you look at her written decision, her written decision did not touch upon whether, to what extent, you have authority under Title thirty-three. This in fact is in the statute. It has nothing to do with English dictionaries. It is in fact the statute that controls this particular license. And under the statute, you have a licensee that holds a plenary retail consumption license that is operating in a zone that provides for restaurants. It does not meet the title provisions for what is a restaurant, and it is operating not only in violation of your zoning law, but more importantly, it's operating in violation of Title thirty-three. And it can't be a tavern, because taverns are not allowed to sell food. So your, your dilemma is that while you could turn around and say, oh, you know, Mr. Al, it is what it is. The problem is, is that you have a clear violation of the operating privileges and situations licenses are operating, what they're permitted, specifically. The statute is eighty-six years old. It is a dinosaur. It should be confined to museums or the gallery to look at, but it hasn't been changed, and it's unlikely to be changed. But it's set up certain classes of licenses in Title thirty-three, under which the state regulates the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. That purpose of the statute has never changed, and classes of licenses have not essentially changed. A plenary retail consumption license since at least nineteen forty-seven has been able to sell to go, but under very, very clear restrictions. And this particular licensee has to operate within those restrictions. It is not. It is the governing body's responsibility under Title thirty-three to enforce the law, the statute, and the rest. Here it's statutory. And I suggest to you that notwithstanding an amendment of the zoning application, when the clear indication has been that it wants to, to operate a liquor store, the zoning application and zoning determination does not necessarily change the fact that you have an entity operating in violation of state law, and as such, it's not entitled to operate. On the other hand, you don't want to have a license of viewers, because we all know that they're controlled by population. You don't want to have a license yet lost to municipality. So you don't want to be in a situation where you don't renew a license, because then your license may be out of inventory, because if I do a rough count, you have more licenses in your population. You don't want to use, lose a restaurant license. No municipality does. But notwithstanding that fact, even if you renew that license, so you don't lose it, you have a responsibility and the authority, more importantly, to administratively determine that in fact it's operating in violation of its privilege, it's operating in violation of the statute, and that that license should be suspended until they come into compliance. And that's a simple fact. I would like to, to ask that, that Mr. Coughlin, in an opportunity to speak to you, uh, he won't take long, but I think he can probably better explain this than me, because he sat in the chair. Thank you, mayor. Do you want to swear?
Robin, do you want to swear? Oh, okay. Will you just raise your right hand, and do you have, uh, something that you're swearing on?
I have a Bible.
I have administrative rights.
There you go.
You gonna bring your own Bible, John?
Uh, do you solemnly swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Coughlin, just so the, the governing body knows who you are, what you are, explain your prior experience of the agency regulation in California.
Yes. I was employed as a detective for the Division of Department of Law and Public Safety for a total of thirty-four years, the twenty-two years of which was with the Division of Criminal Justice, where I ended up being the chief of detective. From there, I moved to the Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control, where for twelve years I was the chief state investigator, the investigative division of the Division of Alcoholic Beverage Control. During those twelve years, I either participated or supervised in some seventeen thousand cases involving administrative violations of the ABC Act, both Types thirty-three and the Administrative Regulations, NJAC thirteen colon two, at AL. I retired in two thousand and fourteen, um, as live in Pennsylvania.
Mr. Coughlin, have you had an opportunity to review the exhibits that you previously provided to the governing body?
I have.
And have you also had an opportunity to actually visit Fork River Wine and Spirits?
I did.
And as a result of that, are you in a position to relate to the governing body as it relates to the operation and its compliance with applicable regulations?
Yeah, I see several issues. First, there's, if you are thirty, thirty-three licensed, a consumption license, which is what they have, that means your principal business is to serve alcohol for consumption on the licensed premise. You're either a bar, tavern, restaurant, nightclub, some business where your principal source of income in the sale, service, and delivery of alcohol is the consumption of alcohol on the licensed premise. The, the way the store is currently configured, uh, more than half the store is a liquor store. In fact, when you walk in through the front door, the entire front of the store is shelving on both perimeter walls. There's gondolas of alcohol that go down through the center, all of which are prohibited under administrative statutes. There is also shelving across the front of the store. Now, the way a store is designed, it has floor-to-ceiling windows in the design, um, under ABC Administrative Regulations and also a Supreme Court case. Shelving in front of those windows is also a broad package violation. So broad package violation would normally subject, um, on first, on first blush, a presumption of a ten-day suspension. But the real issue is compliance, because that's the whole purpose of the ABC Act, is to ultimately, um, not revoke licenses, but to bring licenses into compliance. So how can we bring these licenses into compliance? Well, if it continues to be configured the way it is, it will always be in, uh, non-compliance, and ultimately, you would reach a point where you'd have to revoke the license. So if, if it is a, if it, if it wants to be a liquor store, um, they need to get a forty-four license, the way they're currently, uh, currently configured, or a distribution license. If they want to be a tavern, so if they want to be a thirty-two, um, they can be a tavern, but, um, according to Mr. Rial, that is a violation of your zoning ordinance. So therefore, that leaves them with a problem that they want to be a restaurant. So they have created an entity inside the liquor store called, uh, the Thirsty Piney Bar and Grill, and there's a sign inside at the bar that says that's what they are. Well, on the license, there is no trade name listed for Thirsty Piney Bar and Grill. We don't know who owns it, who runs it, how the profits are being distributed, which is a violation of the, uh, ABC Act, and you have an incomplete license, because you can't make decisions as the governing body without, with, with incomplete information. If they want to be a restaurant, they have to comply with the statute, Title thirty-three, that defines what a restaurant is. And as Mr. Rial has just read you what that definition is, and there's no way this complies, because they don't even have a kitchen. And the waitstaff will tell you, hey, the food is coming from the pizza place four doors down. And they literally bring the food down the sidewalk in tins and deliver it to the bar where they serve it, uh, un, un, take off the aluminum foil and give you plastic spoons and forks, and you eat the food from the pizza place. That's not the definition of a restaurant. So that what they are trying to do is in a So that what they are trying to do is an attempt to comply with Title 33, and they're not. So if they want to be a restaurant, then they have to go back before this board and they have to get permission to build a kitchen and reconfigure their current establishment. If they want to be a tavern, then they have to come back before the board and get zoning clearance to become a tavern. Meaning that taverns, there is a strict definition of what a tavern is under Title 33. And if you're a bar tavern where your primary purpose is to only sell alcohol, you can only sell supplementary food items, and it's specific in the statute, beer nuts, peanuts, pretzels, potato chips. Those are the types of things that you can sell as a tavern. They're not doing this. If you want to be a liquor store, then the bar has to go and they have to somehow acquire a distribution license. But as they're configured now, they're in violation of the statute and they're in violation of the administrative rights defined broad package violations.
Just, Coughlin, let me ask you about, just when you walk in, you walk into a restaurant, a bar or a liquor store?
That's the other problem. Under the statute, you're supposed to be able to walk into the primary bar room. When you walk into this store, you walk into a liquor store. You do not see the bar, the bar is in the back. It's actually, they've constructed a partial wall by putting an ice machine in the place. They actually have different flooring. From the liquor store is one type of flooring that leads you, the flooring actually leads you around in a circle of red paint somehow on, in the floor, in the concrete to show that. And then you, there is a clear demarcation and you enter into the bar area, which has different flooring, and the bar begins. So that's the principal bar room, that back room, not the front where the liquor store is. And that's where the violation occurs. The entire purpose of conveying to a consumption licensee the ability to sell packaged goods was an auxiliary use for the primary purpose, for the convenience of its patrons. Someone goes to a bar at night, they have a few drinks, they have dinner, they want to take a six-pack or they want to take a bottle of wine home, they're allowed to do that. It's an auxiliary function, it's not your primary function. This is, if you visit this place, their primary function, you don't have the ability to take, you know, I did not have the ability to take testimony from the owner, but I do not know what the percentages of sales are. But from the very looks of the business, primary purpose here is the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off the licensed premise.
What, in the context of the operation as it exists, as it relates to being in compliance or possibly in compliance with the regulations? Are there any of the forward shelving that is on the exterior walls? We decide to go off this for a second, but as it relates to the exterior wall shelving on either side of the store up through and under the windows, is it your opinion, given your prior experience and your history, that all that actually is not in the principal bar room, given the way the room, the store is laid out?
Right, the way it's configured, they have created a demarcation of what is the principal bar room, which is in the back of the store. The front of the store is nothing but shelving along the wall. It's a separate area for the sale of alcohol for consumption off the licensed premise. The shelving on the perimeter walls appears to be no more than two feet in depth, which is in compliance with the statute. The shelving in the front is a violation because the windows of the construction of the building go all the way to the ground. And under the ABC regulations, you're not to have any shelving in front of windows. That's prohibited.
Mr. Coughlin, if a representative of the licensee was here this year, would the questions you want to pose to that individual not only include percentage of income or the sale of what's going out the front door, but also how much alcoholic beverages they have purchased and have put through the store in their inventory?
That would all be part of the inquiry because you're looking at, again, what is the primary purpose of this license? And the primary purpose of this license is the sale of alcohol on the licensed premise. It's a completely different business model from one of retail liquor stores.
And am I correct in understanding, because I'm not quite as old as the statute, but am I correct in understanding that the statute itself in creating the classes was intended to create a balanced regulatory approach so as competition could be maintained and each class of licensee would be in the ability to operate within the scope of their license privilege?
Yes, the issue with alcohol, the alcoholic beverage regulation is that once you were under, this goes back to the Twenty-First Amendment of the Constitution at the end of prohibition, we allowed alcohol to once again be served and each state was required to establish a regulatory scheme and up to and including temperance, they could be dry if they so desired. New Jersey created a regulatory scheme in which there are various classes of licenses and everything from manufacturing to distribution to retail. And the retail licenses are then divided up from seasonal licenses, although there are not many left, but the idea of shore bars with seasonal licenses, to consumption licenses, to distribution licenses. Shortly after World War Two, about the same time we redid our Constitution in nineteen forty-seven, the legislature imposed population caps. And that unfortunately has never been readdressed or, you know, I'm not here to debate the wisdom of all that, but it is what it is. And so the idea is that there's more consumption licenses, ability to have more restaurants per population, one per three thousand population, as opposed to distribution licenses, which are one per seventy-five hundred population. And the idea is that the business models of each business are different. One operates, a restaurant operates on relatively low volume of alcohol, higher profit. The business model of a liquor store is that of a grocery store, big volume, smaller margins. And so the legislature enacted these population caps in order to allow fair competition in the industry. When you have a person of one license pinching upon the rights of other licenses, you have unfair competition. And that's why the broad package regulations were established originally.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the committee, may I ask you a question?
Anybody?
Everything you've never wanted to know about.
Mayor and member of the members of the committee, you know, you don't have, I don't, you know, obviously I don't think they're sent to Fork River. I don't know why they're not here. They have an obligation to be here.
They're here.
They are here?
Yes, they are.
Oh, somebody's here? Okay. Bottom line is, is that clearly an operation is a violation of the regs and the statute. I don't suggest you don't renew. But you cannot renew and allow them to continue in violation of the regs and the statute. And you should do one of two things, I suggest. One is to issue the formal charges under the regulations so that they can come in and have a hearing, due process, at which time you can take action if you so determine after you hear the facts. Or on the renewal is a special condition. You have the authority under the statute, as a special condition, to turn around and renew on the condition that they come into compliance and that until they come into compliance, they are suspended from the sale of alcoholic beverages. That is the authority that you have under Title 33. You have concurrent jurisdiction with the director of the Division of Criminal Justice. And since this is a license, or the Division of Alcoholic Beverage, I'm sorry, for a general interest. But you have the authority, as a local authority, it is your license that you issue. It is a license that you've granted privilege for operating. Right now you have a licensee that's violating the authority you granted them under the privilege. And quite frankly, when you look at your resolution, the resolution you adopted on approving the draft, citing the license, specifically on paragraph two says you shall comply with all the statutes, rules and regulations in the state as it relates to the alcoholic beverage industry. This licensee unfortunately is not. It's not to say you can't come into compliance. Whether it wants to spend the money to do so is a business decision you can make. But that is the issue before you decide. Again, it's not only about whether you renew or not. It's the fact that, frankly, you don't want to lose the license, you're going to know it. Any number of municipalities are crying for additional places. Nobody ever wants to lose, trust me. But notwithstanding that, you, I suggest, cannot allow an entity operating with a privilege in violation of that. And that's the essentials of the objection. It is your decision. It is, as the courts and the statute say, and the administrative setting, less to the exercise of your sound discretion and judgment. If you sit on the land use board or a zoning board, you've heard that before from your solicitors. The same rules apply here. And I thank you for your time and comments.
Thank you. I'm going to ask our attorney to, before that, I'm going to call. I ask your attorney to go over Judge Ford's decision and give us the, what Judge Ford did.
I do have an excerpt from her opinion where we discussed Title 33. The statute itself states that the holder of a plenary retail consumption license can sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on the licensed premises by the glass or other open receptacle and also to sell any alcoholic beverages in original containers for consumption off the premises. It doesn't talk about business models or what the intent was. I mean, that's something that you would go into if you were going to be questioning the statute. It doesn't talk about that, it just gives us general permission. The ABC handbook says that the sale of packaged goods can only take place in a public bar room and that the packaged goods may only be displayed for sale on the perimeter walls unless a floor print was approved by the ABC in the nineteen seventies. Judge Ford acknowledged that, saying that NJSA thirty-three colon one dash twelve permits sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises and allows the sale of alcoholic beverages in original containers for consumption off premises. The use by Fork River Wines and Spirits is consistent with this statute. The retail sale of liquor is limited to the stock on the perimeter walls and in the cooler. It's within the exercise of the administrative discretion by the township officials to determine compliance with the zoning code. And she dismissed it.
And as I said earlier, she addressed the zoning issues, not the territory.
Let us hear from our attorney.
I accept that.
And the zoning issue about the restaurant and the tavern is something that was raised here again today. And the township has issued a zoning permit and considers the use, I mean, there's no bars anywhere allowed within the township. But if you have a restaurant, you have a liquor license, you can operate, you can sell liquor. And this establishment, the township has determined to be a restaurant. It serves food and it serves alcohol with the food. There's no requirement in the township ordinances that requires the food to be cooked on premises. And there's no prohibition from bringing food from another establishment and walking it down the sidewalk covered in tin foil. It's just not a requirement in this town. And the zoning code does not adopt Title 33's definitions. Title 33 definition of restaurant applies to restaurant in the terms of an ABC license, but the township zoning code is separate and it does not use that definition.
I assume then that the township's position is that its zoning ordinance trumps the statute under Title 33?
When it comes to zoning, I mean, the township's...
Leave aside the zoning, counsel. Leave aside the zoning. Leave aside the zoning issue and confront the usage of the privilege of the license. Essentially what you're saying is, well, it meets our zoning code because our zoning officer said, yeah, okay, fine. And we haven't adopted a restaurant definition. Even though Title 33 provides you one, you don't have to adopt that and that's fine. But you still have a regulated license in a regulated industry. And that regulated license has to comply with those statutes. And the statute says, a restaurant, notwithstanding what your local ordinance may say, has to have a functioning kitchen. This does not. To basically try to say that, well, you know, we don't have to deal with this because it's okay with our zoning officer is essentially not acting in accordance with the authority directly granted to you under Title 33. You know, I accept the fact, for the purpose of this presentation, I'll accept the fact that your zoning officer said it's okay. I'm not here appealing the zoning officer's decision. However, in the entire scheme of things, given the facts that were presented and the facts as they developed as it relates to the usage and the development of the property, it's all part of the program. It's all part of the factual pattern. Well, leave aside the zoning. The zoning is essentially, I guess, immaterial. But you still have the ultimate problem that you have under your authority, clear authority, that you have to act. And you have a clear statutory definition under that authority that says what a restaurant is. And this is not. And as a matter of purpose, if it doesn't meet Title 33's definition of restaurant, it doesn't matter whether your zoning suggests it is or isn't. You can't allow them to operate because this is not a retail store. And whether they've amended the permit or not, it has been their intent to operate a retail store as an evidence by everything that you presented as it relates to the liquor application because they said that on page four of the initial application. They can go to the, for the far purposes, we don't have to worry about zoning. I guess it's subtitled. But the reality is, is under Title 33, there isn't any question. It's not a duck.
Title 33 does not require that a plenary retail consumption license be in a restaurant.
All right. I mean, Mr. Smith, you were... The Board acts, the Board acts. You have clear authority in the statute. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Smith, you need to come up there. Do you want to comment on this?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Just have his name for the record.
Maybe we'll go back in the thing. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Terry Smith and I am one of the principals of Fork River Wines and Spirits. And I spent forty years in the industry. So what you've heard tonight is partly true, Mr. Real, but it's not all true.
Address the committee, please.
It's not all true. But irrelevant of what I have to say or what he has to say or any of the witnesses, there's only one authority that we have to respect as far as the license and that is the township and the ABC. Now, I don't know why, but the ABC came through our doors as soon as we opened several times and basically catalogued every inch of the building from pictures, measurements, footprints, everything. They left and they were fine. We have never been served with any violations and I don't think we will because we're very stringent upon staying within the confines of the license. Mr. Real talked about a bar, there's two bars, Mr. Real. There's a bar in the front, that is the grower station, and there's a bar in the back. The bar in the back is twenty-four hundred forty-four square feet. And the room in the front with the grower station, which is a service bar, is three thousand square feet. So really, the whole space is used as a bar. Now, yes, you're right, the walls have one hundred and thirty-four feet of linear feet of shelving. They're twenty-four inches deep and wherever they can be used, we use them as shelving. But if you think that someone that's in business would rent six thousand square feet and put nothing in the middle, it makes no sense. That's why we have two bars. So the premise is that we are hoping to reach a level of sales that will accomplish what we set out to do. But as far as compliance, this license, as far as the ABC, is one hundred percent. That's all I have to say, thank you.
All right, let me open this up to the public. Does the public have any comment on this?
On this matter alone.
Sheen, I motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
We're going to take a vote on it on the township meeting, not on this meeting.
We're going to take a vote on the township.
The resolution for consideration, whether you approve or deny the renewal, is on the township meeting this evening.
Is this fair?
No, no, that's, this won't be law.
That'll be Resolution twenty nineteen dash two thirty.
Right, when we get to the township portion of the meeting.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. All right.
This is the next item on the list, number three.
Request for, number three, request for special event and signage. This is Lidl Grand Opening, September twelfth through the fifteenth.
Lidl is opening on September twelfth through the fifteenth, obviously to put up the additional signage and to do their special activities for those couple of days. They would like special permission to step outside their approval of their zoning for that timeframe. Do we have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fork River Presbyterian Church Fall Festival, September fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
This is basically held mostly indoors, but again, this is outside the scope of their zoning permit so they're looking for special permission to hold this fundraising event. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fourth is request of consideration of limiting the use...
Fourth is request of consideration of limiting the use of plastic bags. This has been brought to my attention a couple of times from different people throughout the town. I thought we'd throw it up here. See what you guys have to say, thoughts about it?
I provided you with the copy of Stafford's ordinance. We have gotten several requests, and I did attach the most recent request with regards to us limiting the use of plastic bags. I'm not looking for a decision this evening. You may want time to, you know, absorb this ordinance, see what Stafford did. I don't know if any of these have shot down in Stafford. Most of the time, you have to bring your own bags. So, you know, it's up to you guys what you want to do. Obviously, you know, plastic is a big item in the environment lately. As you can see, they're switching from plastic straws to paper straws and trying to get rid of the plastic in the environment.
I think we should just take it under advisement.
Yes.
For another time.
Exactly what I'm asking.
I just want to make a motion on that.
We, no, we just need a motion to close this meeting.
Move it. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we can go into the township portion of the meeting.
Okay. Out of good notice for receiving meetings, the receiving meetings have been given in accord to the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public calls of 1975. Head notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the... Please rise to the flag in moment of silence.
I don't know. I think if our chairs got stuck together.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You still staying? I can't believe they didn't break.
He's not even in school, so he's not getting school credit for that. Oh, okay. All right.
We'll sign it. Like, you mean, you need that slip, just bring it in. I'll sign it.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Number one, second reading ordinance 2019, national of amending chapter 289 recycling so as to set the fees for the closing of tires.
In order to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the amending and supplementing the township code of the township of Lacy so as to amend chapter 289-7 entitled Recycling Drop Off Center. As you know, we allow the disposal of up to five tires per residential household. The county and the township now are being charged by the vendors that do dispose of them for us, so we are looking to recoup those costs at $2 per tire for the drop off.
Move it.
Open the floor, second reading.
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2019-12, amending chapter 178 fees so as to set fees for marriage ceremonies performed by the mayor and deputy mayor.
In order to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the amending and supplementing the township code of the township of Lacy so as to amend chapter 178 entitled Fees. This is for the fees for the performance of marriage ceremonies performed by the mayor or deputy mayor. This will be residents of Lacy where the ceremony is within the boundaries of Lacy Township is $50, where the mayor has to travel outside of Lacy, $75. Non-residents within Lacy is $100. Non-residents outside of Lacy is $150. Second reading, open the floor. Any comments?
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2019-13, setting salaries for various positions.
In order to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the amending and ordinance entitled, in order to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensations to officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is setting the tax assessor's salary, the deputy tax assessor's salary, part-time public safety telecommunicators, and part-time public safety telecommunicators after the first year of employment. Motion to, this is second reading, open the floor.
Seeing now motion to close the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-223, authorizing to join the lawsuit with the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the township attorney to join the lawsuit challenging the Attorney General's Immigration Trust Directive.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-224, appointing laborers for the public work supply.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the employment of Thomas Boyd, Alexander Brower, Scott's, is it Smed... How do you say your last name? Scott Smedel?
Oh, Smedle.
Smedley, and Michael Valari as full-time laborers for the Department of Public Works. They are beginning on Monday, and two of the gentlemen are in the back there.
Move it.
Second. Give me a second.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome.
Yeah. Resolution 2019-225, according seasonal recreation staff.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the employment of seasonal employees for the recreation department.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-226, authorizing the shared services with Berkeley Township for Municipal Court Callout Coverage.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the execution of an interlocal services agreement with the Township of Berkeley for callout coverage with Lacy Township Municipal Court. This is on an as-needed basis. We assist Berkeley. Berkeley assists us for callout services when we're not available.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-227, authorizing the execution of the Hunterdon County Cooperative Purchasing System.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the township of Lacy to enter into a cooperative purchase agreement with the lead agency, Hunterdon County Educational Services Commission, for the purchase of work materials and supplies pursuant to NJSA 48:11-115. This is just another cooperative that we're able to purchase through. We are looking to purchase our new recreation bus through this cooperative.
Move the motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-228, renewing our membership in the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the renewing membership in the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. This is the insurance pool that we are in with many other municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. This one will expire on December 31 of 2022.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-229, authorizing the place-to-place transfer for retail consumption licenses for Route 9 restaurants.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing and approving a place-to-place transfer of liquor license 151233017003 for Route 9 restaurants known as Caffrey's Backyard. And this was because it was a pocket license, and now we have a location, and there's going to be hopefully opening in the very near future.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-230, renewing a plenary retail consumption license.
This is the one we just had the public hearing on.
Yes.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the renewing plenary retail consumption license in the township of Lacy, and this is for the Forked River Wine and Spirits, and this will be through June 30 of 2020. And you can make a motion to approve, or somebody can make a motion to deny.
Move it.
Give me a second.
I'll step down. I'll second it.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-233, providing for an item of revenue in the municipal budget.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the execution of amendment to the contract with Albert Marine Construction for the Hances Pond Maintenance Dredging Project. As you know, we had entered into a contract with Albert Marine Construction for the Hances Pond. We went out and did an additional survey, because you needed to have a survey that was less than six months old with regards to the sediment in the pond. Unfortunately, it has shoaled in additionally more, so there's another 1,130 cubic yards that need to be removed. We're close to almost 2,000 cubic yards that we're removing. The additional cost is $87,541. Yes, we did fund for it, and I did plan for it at budget time. I got this covered, and it should, the project will actually be done hopefully by the end of this week.
Yay.
Take a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-232, authorizing a change fund in the Department of Public Works.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing a change fund in the amount not to exceed $50 to provide change to individuals making payments to the Department of Public Works.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-232, authorizing a change fund in the Department of Public Works.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing a change fund in the amount not to exceed $50 to provide change to individuals making payments to the Department of Public Works.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-233, providing for an item of revenue in the municipal budget.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2019 municipal budget known as chapter 159 of the township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87. This is for the shared services with the borough of Tuckerton. This is in the amount of $17,500 for the remainder of this year.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-234, authorizing release of a maintenance bond for the Police Department HBAC project.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the release of a maintenance bond and a performance bond issued by Performance Mechanical Incorporated for the HVAC rooftop unit replacement phase two for the Police Department. This has met its retention period. It has been maintained. It is working well, and we are authorizing it to be released, the bond.
Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennas? Oh, second? Sorry.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-235, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for road opening permit number 4189.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for the new, issued for New Jersey Natural Gas Company for road opening permit 4189. This is for maintenance main renewals on East Lacy Road prior to our paving project.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dyckoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution 2019-236, authorizing the refund of performance bond for road opening permit number 4830.
Resolution to attach at Lacy County, motion to standard, is the authorizing the refund of a performance bond and application fees for the road opening permit number 4830. This was for Devon Street, and it was, the job was not performed.
Move it.
Second.[1345.88]
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-thirty-seven authorizing the refund of the building department fee.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department for eight oh-four Sandpiper Drive and it's in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, the individual is no longer moving forward with the solar project.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-thirty-eight authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing the tax question to cancel the 2019 taxes due on a property granted to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block nineteen oh-one point seventeen lot ninety-three, block four seventy-seven lot forty-seven, block sixteen thirty-one point oh-two lot fourteen, and block nineteen oh-one point seventeen lot seventy-six.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-thirty-nine authorizing the cancellation of uncollectible taxes.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing tax question to cancel uncollectible taxes and refund tax overpayments. This is on block four thousand thirty-two lot ten and block six thirty lot eleven point oh-one. This is a duplicate on the assessment rolls and needs to be deleted.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-forty authorizing placing a lien on the property, the property maintenance issues for block one-one-five lot one-four.
A resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at one-fourteen Beach Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of ninety-seven dollars and four cents.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-forty-one authorizing placing a lien on the property for property maintenance issues for block two-five-six lot one-six.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at four oh-three Riverview Road and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs in the amount of a hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents.
Motion?
Move it.
Second, please?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash two-forty-two authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing refund of deposit tell for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes. Resolution twenty nineteen two-forty-three authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of ten million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. Now remember, we haven't met in five weeks, so it's the school taxes and the county taxes. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with abstention U forty-four ninety-eight.
Mayor McDonald?
And U forty-four ninety-nine.
Okay, sorry. Mayor McDonald?
Yes, abstention, uh...
Abstention?
Yeah, on H two-twenty-seven forty-seven. Monthly reports.
Okay, for the month of July, municipal, for the month of June municipal court collected receipt to the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. For the month of July, the municipal court collected receipt to the amount of twenty-five thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seven cents. For the month of June, the Department of Community and Development collected receipts to the amount of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty cents. For the month of July, Department of Community and Development collected receipts to the amount of forty-six thousand and seventy dollars. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of July collected receipts to the amount of four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. For the month of July, road opening permits were collected in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-five cents. Recycling commodity in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Truck parking in the amount of three hundred and forty dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the township meeting minutes of July eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of July eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve a raffle license application for the Lacey Township High School Booster Association, the Women's Club of, of, of Lorage Barnagut, the Lacey Township PBA local two-thirty-eight, and Rotary Club of Forker River.
Move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we just have community comments.
Comments from the committee. We'll start down here with our world traveler, just back from Iceland.
Iceland. I am.
Deputy Mayor Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. On the topic of money, uh, tax bills came out last night, or last night, last month. And I just want to recognize all levels of Ocean County government for the fiscal discipline to hold increases to a minimum this year. The county rate actually went down two-tenths of a cent and overall the entire tax rate increased by two-point-five cents. And that might be the lowest increase since I've been sitting on the township committee. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say that as long as we're sitting here, we'll do our best to provide the level of service and the quality of life that Lacey residents have come to expect at the least cost to our taxpayers. That's why I'm here.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Well, it was pretty interesting. I echo those sentiments. Um, and the only other thing, believe it or not, summer's almost over. And, um, school's starting soon. Watch out for those kids. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you.
Give him a minute, Curatolo.
Yes. I had a couple of prepared comments that I normally just, uh, be, uh, from the heart, off the cuff. But I think there's a couple of things that merit mentioning, uh, what's going on in our town in particular. And I think it's important. I think it's a lot to be proud of. I'd like to call it essentially a renaissance of what, what's happening in our town with particularly regard to, um, businesses, not only, uh, small businesses, but homes, existing home sales, new home sales as well. Uh, just in the last several months, I compiled a short list. Um, we have RWJ Barnabas physicians into the former Hart Building, Jersey Charm Coffee, Holtech came to town, Urban Shack Artisan Shop, Aldi forthcoming, Lidl forthcoming September twelfth, Cafferty's Tavern inside and out very soon now, we're hopeful. To dovetail with the business part of it, uh, we wanted to control what we could control. The Estate Card Program, if you call six-nine-three-eleven-hundred, or if you go on lacytownship.org, uh, you could see a little bit over, uh, twelve-hundred people have signed up for the Estate Card Program already. Uh, it's money that comes right off of your property tax bill. Uh, it's very easy to read, uh, there are numerous benefits, uh, to the card itself. I think a mailer went out with our MUA, our latest quarterly MUA bill and, and the tax bill. So if you have a spare moment or if you have questions, please six-nine-three-eleven-hundred. It is not like, um, card programs in the past. This is good, uh, at many merchants in our town as well as thirty-two-hundred online merchants. So these are purchases you'd make anyway. We wanted to control what we can control. We had a very, uh, successful negotiation with that company. Uh, we have home selling in, in Seabreeze in our retirement, uh, communities. We have the Harrington Group that our mayor was very instrumental in getting. This is, uh, this town now has a PR firm. We have a YouTube channel. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, we were a town of distinction, uh, named by RWJ Barnabas for the work that, really not that any of us did, but the work that our police department did. And curiously enough, and I'm glad that you're all here tonight in the audience, the municipal alliance has done and the schools have done to keep kids off drugs, underage drinking, alcohol, things like that. So out of all the municipalities, we, we were recognized. I want some of these things spoken about. These are, these are real achievements in our town to control costs, to increase ratables, uh, to talk about achievements of our teachers, our, our people, our police, our alliance folks. Uh, these are things that are happening. As we try to delve in beginning into tourism, the above-ground, above-water water park referred to as the Whippet. I think the mayor will have more comments on that as well. Uh, I believe we're over fifty thousand dollars now. Uh, increase of seventeen hundred beach passes this year over last. So there's a lot to be proud, there's always been a lot to be proud of in Lacey. But I think when you talk about business now and you dovetail it with what's going on in the national scene, interest rates at historic lows, uh, employment, uh, unemployment at historic lows and for groups African-American, female, Hispanic. I think it's a great time to be here. I'm, I'm as enthusiastic as I've ever been and as proud as I've ever been to live in Lacey. And I will tell you, our people make it great. I'd be remiss if I could have one more comment, Mayor. Uh, the mayor and I, uh, on August third, we were at, uh, a function on Route Nine at the Moose. Uh, we saw an active code. I spoke about this, uh, forty-eight hours ago Tuesday night, uh, where somebody was actively receiving CPR. Within two minutes, and that's no exaggeration, the Lacey EMS was on scene, uh, and that person now, as I understood from our mayor, uh, who jumped in, uh, the other night when we, we were speaking and he helped me out. That person now is doing better and that, that person's life was saved. There were two ambulances and an SUV onsite in virtually no time, in real time. Before we put our bottles of water down, the folks were there and there was a number of them there. So I want to say thank you from the bottom of our heart. God bless that, uh, Lacey, yeah, all of our services, police, fire, and EMS. That will conclude my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Curatolo. Okay, um, we'll start this off. Uh, earlier this evening, we joined the Ocean County Board of Chosen Freeholders in a lawsuit against the Attorney General of the State of New Jersey. This has to deal with ICE. Um, back in March, I wrote a letter to the Attorney General asking for some clarification because essentially what he has done with his order is put our police department in jeopardy of federal regulations. And I wanted clarifications because he say you don't have, they're not just, not to put, uh, work with ICE, but the federal regulations say you gotta work with ICE. And this puts this town in jeopardy, puts the citizens in jeopardy. So still haven't heard back from the agent. Don't expect it. But this is a very, very important issue going forward as to whether we're gonna follow the laws of this great country of ours or not. And I really don't care what your political side of the aisle is. You don't like the law, change the law. It's as simple as that. That, that's how I feel about that. Now, getting on to Mr. Kennis's, his taxes and so forth like that, some people say, what are we spending the money on? Well, let me tell you what we're spending the money on. If you've been at the end of Gilly Park, uh, the wooden guardrail is up. Now, that is to protect when we have festivals and stuff like that, so cars just don't come off of Western Boulevard and run into people and hurt them. The wooden guardrail will stop that. The Gilly Park new playground equipment is in and that will start in October, right after Lacey. If you've been down at the Bayfront Park, that's, we're putting that rubber eyes matting down for that. So that's got, get, get the ground prepared for that. And then in the springtime, we'll put everything together. So the Gilly Park Playground will be closing in October, so we'll be taking it all down and probably will not reopen. And I guess, depending on the weather, sometime in late April or early May. That would be my timeframe for that. Don't hold me to that. We're also putting a new playground in up at, uh, out of Bamber, at Bamber Park. This is what we're spending your tax dollars on. Um, we, we got a, a grant for it, but the Laura Boulevard paving, is that complete?
No.
It's not completed yet, but it'll be completed in the next couple of weeks. The, uh, Hancys Pond dredging, we're, we're spending, we're spending your tax dollars to make this town better. We bought a lot of, uh, equipment for public work. We've put public works, buying equipment off of public works for many, many years because we want to get them out. But, uh, last year, Committeeman, uh, Juliana was back there and literally took a dump truck off the road and came in and said, we, we gotta do something. So we, we're buying, we're buying equipment for that. We're spending the money as wisely and as efficiently as possible. And some people have said, you know, the Whippet. What is that doing? How about fifty-six thousand dollars? And we're not even through the summer yet. We'll figure that's gonna be about sixty-five thousand dollars. It's increased to beach badges. People are talking about this all over the place. We probably got almost a million dollars in free publicity from newspapers, things like that. Uh, I was on all the Philadelphia channels about this. They were down. So this is some good stuff for us and if we continue at this pace, this Whippet will be paid off in, in two and a half years. Uh, I just want to mention that Lacey Day is Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Come on out. It's gonna be a great time. Also, on Thursday, August twenty-ninth, in the middle school, Congressman Kim is holding the town hall meeting here. So we invite everybody to come out there and, and question, uh, Congressman, uh, Kim. Also Holtech, this is in September twenty-second, I believe it is.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. They will also hold, help, uh, a, a town hall meeting at the middle school. And you can come out and question. I'm all about what they're doing down at the power plant. Veronica and I attended a meeting on the census, which was gonna take place next year. This is extremely important, not only because the, the money that the county gets, they can spend down here in Lacey. So we're looking for some volunteers on that. You can actually get paid. I'll have that, uh, address for you at the next meeting. But the census, twenty-twenty census is gonna be critical for us. What else do we have? And I'll wrap this up with, in twenty-twenty-one will be Lacey Township's one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. We're starting on that and we'll, we'll be hearing more about things that we, uh, will be doing for Lacey's more hard and efficient down the road. With that, I will open it up to the public. Does the public have any comment here on these? Come on down. I did forget to mention your volunteers. I apologize. I'll let you, I'll let you talk.
Yes. I guess you can figure that out. Uh, we're wearing our shirts. I have some, um, by the way, Heather Scanlon, I am the coordinator for the Lacey Municipal Alliance and I'm very proud of the things that we do in this town. I have some of our volunteers here this evening. Um, we do a lot of good things, but of course, we're coming up on our annual big event, our five-k race, which is Saturday, August twenty-fourth. And I hope that you will join us. If you don't...
I don't miss one yet.
Well...
I don't run, but...
You can walk. We have a five-mile, a five-k race at, at eight-thirty. At eight o'clock, though, we have a one-mile fun run. That's for everybody. You can even walk it if you want. And if that isn't enough, you can try the kitty dashes, but I don't know if you'll be allowed.
I'll still lose with those.
But seriously, I just want to highlight this for two reasons. Well, first of all, because of the great work that we do. And we have had so many generous sponsors this year. They really stepped up to the plate. And we'll be putting a thank you to them out in our recycling calendar, which we publish every year, well, our newsletter, which goes in the recycling ca- calendar every year. But this gives us a chance to raise money for things that, for example, most of you know we get grant money from the state. We don't not, we don't operate on tax dollars. But those funds are, are specified for just specific programs. So when we fundraise, this is our only fundraiser, we're allowed to then supplement with other good programs in the town. We support a lot of good things. We, Project Graduation, we have senior lunches, and we do mentoring programs. So we do a lot of good things. We hope you'll join us.
For what?
For the race.
Oh, move it. We're there for your lunch.
Yeah, you're there to eat. Well, and that's another thing too. At, at our five-k race, we'll give you breakfast and we'll give you lunch. We have bagels, fruit, and Jersey Mike supplies the subs, so what more can you get? And if you run, you get a really good shirt. But I do need volunteers. I am also asking for anybody who would like to volunteer. We need help with our, as course marshals and our water stops as well. So they can contact me at the Recreation Office, the Municipal Alliance Extension. Any questions? You're all dying to go.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Ms. Scanlon, what year, how many years have you been doing this?
Uh, this is, this is our nineteenth race.
So twenty-twenty is twenty?
Yes. And we really would like to make our twentieth in twenty-twenty a big one next year. But I really, I should say, the other reason I do like to come here and, and let our residents know is because we want them to be aware in case there are any disruptions to their traveling plans. Because, uh, over to my left here, Veterans Way, right?
Well, that's kind of behind us, Veterans Way.
Yes, but they will not be able to access...
To your left is Municipal...
Behind Town Hall.
Right.
And in fact, recycling will not open that day until ten o'clock.
Correct.
So I just want people to be aware of that and we ask that they do not use the park unless they're there for the race. So we just would like people to be aware in case they encounter any disruptions to traffic. It will not be for very long. The race starts at eight-thirty. Runners will be done by nine-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before I call the next person, put the next person up, um, I guess a couple meetings back, uh, we lost a good friend here in Bill Moss. And, uh, the plaque, we said we were gonna put a plaque right up here in front and I was just looking down there. And that plaque is right in front of Mr. Kohler. Bill Moss always sat in that spot right there.
It's on the edge of the seat.
It's on, it's on, it's on the edge. And he, he was, he would attend all our meetings. He would attend all the school board meetings and was asking questions about the budgets and so forth. He was a very good town steward for us and we do miss him, but I just wanted to point that out. I think it's a great thing that, uh, that, that a plaque is there for Bill.
And a veteran.
And a veteran, a veteran on top, correct. And an Eagles fan, so he's a good guy.
Yeah, well...
Okay. Regina?
Regina DeCenza, Sunset Drive Sunrise Beach. That was one of the items I noticed that I wanted to say thank you for because I just thought it would be a nice memory. Because he was here for so many years, so many nights. And a lot of nights, we were the only two people here.
True.
The next school board meeting is on Monday, August nineteenth at seven PM in the high school lecture hall. Please come. There is also another vacancy now on the board. A recent Lacey Patch article stated that Mr. de Blasio had stepped down a few weeks ago. A new person must be appointed. Any Lacey registered voter may send in a letter of interest and resume if they wish to be considered for the open board seat. And a board retreat is supposed to be held on Wednesday, August twenty-first from three to seven PM in the high school library. Public is invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue, um, in regard to resolution twenty nineteen two-twenty-three, which is talking about Mayor. Uh, just want to point out, uh, the hypocrisy of both the county and this board, this, this township committee in passing that through when, when I personally know that there are many elected officials within Ocean County, and I can name some names if you'd like, uh, who rent and hire people who are here without the proper documentation. So for the county and you here to push that, I think is an extremely hypocritical move. And, uh, just voicing my opinion on that and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, yeah, resolution?
Resolution two-forty-four, it's a resolution to Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey authorizing convening executive sessions discussing matters of personnel, matters of real estate, anticipated pending, uh, litigation.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
Aye.
All right.
No further action after what?
That's correct.
Yeah.